Okay. As I was just saying, I'll repeat that I wasn't at the session of the hearing the last time on 441 Glen Road and haven't had a chance to see the video for that meeting. So I can't participate in the conversation tonight, but I can -- I'm allowed to audit, of course. So I am going to be listening, but David Mendelson is going to act as the chairman pro tem for this session of the hearing. It has to be that way. I missed the meeting.
Well, we've currently -- was there -- has there been a meeting? Every meeting we've been at.
Two weeks ago.
But we weren't here. We didn't really have that.
I thought.
This is a continuation of.
Was 441 not discussed at the last planning board meeting?
We weren't here.
I was under the impression that it was.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. Was it on -- I didn't realize it was on.
I don't remember which on the website I remember.
I thought if it wasn't discussed.
And the reason was because of determination had yet to be made. That's the reason.
Right. Yeah, it was continued. There was no discussion.
Whether a variance was required for special permit.
That hadn't been decided as of two weeks ago?
Yes. It happened on the same day. I think it happened on the same day.
All right, so there was no discussion two weeks ago on this project?
On October 1st at 9:32, 441 Glen Road was opened and at 9:34 it was moved on to 253 Matterbrook. So there was two minutes.
So you can stay.
Then I can go ahead.
Good to have you back.
I'm not sure if it's a separate -- all right, so we're ready to start the 441 Glen Road. It says 10:00 P.M. If we could do this in maybe a half an hour?
We'd be very grateful. We might need less.
Okay.
I will start. Good evening. My name is John Gleisteen, the architect for 441 Glen Road. I'll just make a quick introduction for my colleague, Eric Swenson, the landscape designer present. So we, at the last hearing, we had the team present. We were continuing pending the decision of town council on whether project required a variance before proceeding zoning or a special permit. And we, as we probably now know, town council has responded that they agree with our applicant's council that this is a special permit case. So we're back and we're back in the original sequence of events where we're looking for the planning boards, RCHPA, to take action before we move on to zoning board, get a special permit for the four pieces of land. So what my colleague Eric Swenson is going to do is give you a quick summary of each of the hearings we presented, which you asked for so that we have clarity. But in general, the last hearing, we did get agreement amongst the neighbors for whether we were going to have a side loaded garage or front loaded garage. There was an enmity between the neighbors. The graciousness on the part of the Saunders, given the neighbor not wanting to look in a longer house to go with the side load. So what we're going to be presenting to you today is that side loaded garage. Eric Swenson will show you some minor positioning tweaks where the house is in the same place, but the north end is rotated slightly back. And there's been a slight increase of screening adjacent to the Saunders and a modest decrease in the cut fill on the order of 100 cubic yards, which Brian Nelson in Metro West will present. So Eric?
Eric Swenson, want to make that up a bit? So this was our first submission, and I just wanted to go through and show you what changes we've made since then. Originally, we had a basin located down in this corner with grading. We've actually pulled that back, put the trees back in in this location, as well as throughout a lot of the limited work around the property. We've removed the pool and the pool cabana along with some terracing that's associated with that. We have dramatically extended this grading out into the property to reduce light removal from the original.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but didn't we talk about all this stuff at the last meeting?
We did, but there was a request that you get an overview, so we wanted to give you that overview.
We're doing very quickly.
Yeah.
We just got to flip through.
Yeah, and then so, and then this will.
So why don't we move to the next?
So on the next one, the next one just shows what John has gone over, the option that we came up against last week, which was option A, B, which had the front loaded garage, right? Last month? Yeah, last month ago. Now, this is the plan that I want to spend some time on. This shows a screening line here that is increased. What we did there was we added about 10 trees in that location and then increased the screening height from 12 to 14 to 14, 16 at the request of the Saunders.
What are they?
They're surveying spruces, which were approved by Kim. And then in the court location where there would be lights, we actually increased the boxwoods to 30 inches to block car lights in that location. And you can see the rotation here. The old layout is the red, the new is the black underlying.
Why did you rotate it?
Well, we used to have a pool house here where we were, our focal point was. Now we rotated it. It provides a better view angle for the Saunders, as well as puts us in line with the rest of the backyard.
And the rotation precisely is this corner remains and this garage corner moved 10 feet. That's just a slight tweak to give a little more weight to the backyard and better solar exposure. And that's the substance of it.
So if you want me to go further than that, let's explain lighting, landscaping.
Okay. Just the changes though?
Just the changes. So our landscape lighting went from approximately 1900 to 1900 lumens, I'm sorry, 19,000 lumens to 13,000. And that's due to the removal of some of the lights in the pool that were in the pool house. We have added one light at the front, which is a post light at the driveway entrance. It's a, it's kind of a precarious situation down there where you have a slope up one side and then you're on a corner. The Saunders requested that we put those lights on motion sensors, and we have agreed with that. The rest of the lighting, I'll pull this over to there just so you can see in color. I've gone through in the past some lighting in the courtyard, lighting in the rear driveway, as well as minimal lighting on the rear terrace, and then obviously the house lighting, which I've gone over in the past. Tree removal has not changed. It is still at 99 trees as it was before. We have reduced some lights out of this, so there's some step lights and down lighting that was in the pool house that is not in this plant anymore. And then in terms of the planting, the planting over here, like I said, 14 to sixteenths in place of 12 to fourteenths, we've added about 10 in that location. And there's also some smaller surveying spruces at 6 to 8 feet on the outskirts of that to block the court and the rear terrace. Other than that, the landscaping has, is unchanged per the last. What's that?
Are sections, did you revise it at all, or is it?
The sections were revised per the, per this plan with the enlarged screen, if you want to see those. Yep. So this section cuts from the Saunders property over into the conservation land. As you can see, this red line being the view angle, it just kisses the top of those trees. Everything above would be what you see, and everything below the red line would be screened. Not, would be screened by our potential screening. That doesn't mean that it isn't screened by these two layers in front of it. And then the other properties here, you have very large buffers between the 445 Glen Road to rear yard with an uphill slope. So your viewing angle from that is actually blocked by terrain quite a bit. And then from the 425 Glen Road property, you have the wetland location between there and the front of the house. Within that, we're doing some additional trees over in that location. Coming off the track.
Do you have a photographic overview?
I do. I just wanted, and this is cut out of the limit of work and showing all of the land, the trees that we are keeping compared to the few that we are taking, which are only located within this, this location here. And it shows the buffer from the road to the house. So from here, it's about 200, 200 feet from here to here. There's a 20-foot grade difference from this location to this location. So looking up this way, you never see the house. Coming around the corner here, you have about 300 feet of woods to the actual front of the house. And the road is curved, so there's not a direct line of sight from Glen Road proper that up to the house. We have about 250 feet here and 300 feet there that are adjacent.
So the ones that will be in the backyard that are the trees that will be gone, can you point those out, the ones in the backyard?
Yep, I'll pull them up. One here?
From the picture, yeah.
Yeah, on the picture. So these trees here?
Yeah. And what are they?
Here. I have those, I've gone over that in the past. That actually hasn't changed, but I can tell you, if you want to go into specifics, what they are. There are eight inch, it's actually a combination of trees and then the attached. It doesn't specifically say on this chart what they are. It does say if they're deciduous or conifers, but it doesn't say the exact kind. I have a chart.
So there are four large, in the verse here, 24, 24, 18, 30. The bounds are 10, 8, 8, 6, 6, 6, 12, 6, 18. So there's just four evergreen trees right in this area that, that are, I'm sorry.
We did, for our first submission, in a request by the board, that we did keep this large set here and regrade it appropriately to keep those.
No deciduous trees there?
Not in this location. There's one 30-inch deciduous that is about.
There's a 12-inch D, 10-inch D, 8D, 14D. So this central area, which overlaps the building footprint, has a grove of deciduous. But back here, except for the 8, 6-inch, these are Cs.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Be very brief on the architecture. This is the same project, house that was presented before with the side loaded and two hearings ago. And so that's what we returned to after doing the study, the board requesting consulting with the neighbors. The only difference in the maximum roof ridge height is in the prior submission, it was six and a half, six and a half inches below the maximum allowable ridge height, and it's increased very slightly to 10 and a half inches. So that's the only metric change to the architecture.
So the peak is lower?
By 40, due to the mild grading adjustments. So that's the architectural change. I will now turn it over to Brian Nelson of Metro West. He'll be brief with me.
Yeah, the civil changes to the site are imminent. We went through, we basically fine tuned all the numbers for the hydrology study based on the tweaks in the grading and the location of the house. And we still have, from a runoff standpoint, we still have reductions in rates and volumes to all design points are in the post-development condition. So we still have basically a benefit to budding properties in the post-development condition. As John mentioned, the average existing grade plane for the latest SMIL has changed by about two or three times the old, so it's a relatively minor change. The cut fill numbers with the latest iteration, they have decreased slightly. We're still over the threshold for a special permit, but we've got a net cut of about 1,040 cubic yards, which was about, in comparison to about 1,150 cubic yards when we created the SMIL, so.
Okay, so you've got to go to the zoning board of appeals for the special permit?
That's correct.
Okay. What was the total again? I'm sorry.
1,040.
Let's see. Is Kim still here?
No, she turned into a pumpkin.
But did she tell you what she, what her thoughts were?
Yeah, she said, you know, Betsy emailed directly, but she was fine with it. And then since she was fine with it, they added some more screening, which, you know, obviously she's even more fine with it.
Okay. I assume you're fine with it, Dave?
Yep, yep. All the, you know, they kind of kept the mitigation that we're being proposed constant as the project kind of shrunk, so, you know, the net decrease has increased. You know, they broke up the analysis so we could see what was happening at basically every neighbor's yard as opposed to like one big number of that thing too, so it's all there.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board? You guys all set? Questions, comments from anyone in the audience? Yes, sir.
Phil Saunders, here with Lucy, 445 Glen Road. Appreciate the work on the screening. Appreciate the lights going, the timers.
Motion detectors.
Motion detectors. Driveway lights. Developer and I agree to disagree on the size of the house. Understand you can't come in and buy it anyways. And I still have the view that it should be pushed further back. We do have one request, and that has to do with our work. There are only so many good weather weekends, spring and summer, and it would be nice to enjoy them, be quiet. We would appreciate it very much if the outside, if the work could be limited so that there wasn't any on weekends, or frankly, it makes less difference in the winter. So, you know, maybe if you could just say no weekend work between, I don't know, April Fool's Day and Halloween or something like that.
We'd have standard language on days of working, when they can, including, you know, when they can work outdoors versus indoors, hours of the day, no work on weekends. I mean, that's standard language for us, plus standard.
Are we talking about, we had this discussion before, and somebody, I think it was this gentleman, I'm sorry, I'm very gutted.
David?
David. Mr. Mendelson said, well, it's pretty much boilerplate. Betsy said, boilerplate.
Oh.
The boilerplate, as I understand it, was right out of the bylaws, and that allows work on Saturdays.
Okay.
The boilerplate that I read. So I'm, we're asking for a deviation.
We'll make sure that they're not working on Saturdays.
Huh?
We'll make that a condition.
Okay.
No Saturday work.
Between April Fool's and Halloween?
No, no exterior weekend work. Once the house is closed, you don't care if they're, if they're hammering indoors, once the house is closed.
Yes, because work will leave windows open. It's a little harsh.
You'll keep them longer efficient.
You can't, you can't control these guys. So, you know, it's, it's like.
But anything would be.
Well, you, we've had experience, we've had experience with this. You had it down the street, and you call up the cops, and the cops are friends of all these guys, and they don't like enforcing it, and it just becomes a hassle. We would be, we would be very grateful for just a blanket ban during the good weather months.
Okay. We'll make that a condition.
That's all.
Is it not to be a condition? It's a little. I think so. I mean, you know, is it that onerous that you can't work on Saturdays?
It's almost more onerous to the workers, you know, that they need to work. They need to earn a living.
Like, what about Monday through Friday?
Like everybody else.
Like everybody else, but, but they oftentimes need to work on weekends, they need to feed families, that, you know, it's hard to tell people go away when all their equipment is on the job, they really can't. You know, there's a lot of people out there that need to work six days a week. And I understand that the outdoor work, you know, I think that's in the bylaw. Has it been in the order of conditions for the boilerplate? I'd like to keep with whatever we've been living with, whatever every, every other project that comes before the board has to live with, that we aren't singled up for something more stringent for grievance.
Well, yeah. I mean, what do you guys think?
The current bylaw for Saturdays says there's no, there's work until 5:00, is it? I'm not aware of the language. I think it's important if we can call up the language.
Yes. It's 8:32, and I think it's 5:00 instead of 6:00. I'm sure of the 8:30.
There is some reference to inside work as well, specifically. Does anyone know specifically what that says?
I don't have a memorization. They never work out it anyway, so we could easily say it'll be on 3:00 or something. You know, that's not much, but Roy?
Yeah, it is, my general understanding, all the projects we've done with the permits with you, that exterior work was done a lot on Saturdays, but once the house was buttoned up, secured, windows and et cetera, if someone wanted to work on Saturdays to do painting, plastering, you know, things that are inside the house, it's always sort of been understood and recognized as being allowed.
It has been. What they're afraid of is somebody's going to leave the windows open and be using a power hammer.
Well, I think, you know, frankly, it sounds silly, but if that's a concern, we're in the condition that can't leave the windows open. I mean, my concern is that, you know, your concern is you want this project to be done over with, and frankly, by doing that.
My concern is peace and quiet. We're going to be living, I've asked the developer what is estimate of the time to take, and I think it told me 15 to 16 months to this. Everybody in the room knows these things take longer. It's just the nature of the beast. And so we're, you know, living with this thing for two years.
I guess my concern is if the house is secure and it's quiet indoors, you can shave two months off the project for a month and a half by just allowing painters and, you know, interior work that's quiet going on, and you just get done that much sooner, is my only comment.
Well, painting doesn't make any, no exception. I'm sure that Saunders aren't concerned about noisy paintbrushes.
No power tools, etc.
Well, you might do, you might do trim work and things like that, but again, if the house is secure and the windows and doors.
What about a noise prohibition on Saturdays? You know, I mean, and it's up to the developer to honor the agreement, but the condition that people leave the window open, they're playing, they're using, it's bothering you, that's not allowed.
Well, that's fine, but try and call the sergeant who's on duty to enforce it, who doesn't like doing it.
That's all I have to do is call the building.
No, no, you don't have the self-bond of the project super, whose job is to make sure that you're not aggravated by it.
I mean, we're going to try. Neighbor Paul.
Right, right. You have a relationship with the developer, and he's smart.
I'm not going to get the big speakers.
Shouldn't you have a P&amp;S? That's the end of the story. And you know.
No, I know.
Cannot be heard.
Somebody voiced the language.
Yeah, can I, can I read this? Construction activities shall be permitted Monday through Friday, 7:00 A.M. to 6:30 P.M. Construction activities shall be permitted on Saturdays from 7:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M., provided however that such activity shall be limited to interior work only and may be undertaken only when the home or structure is constructed to the point where such activity cannot be heard outside the home or structure.
There you go.
No outside construction activities shall take place on Saturdays, except between the hours of 8:00 A.M. and 3:00 P.M. So that kind of goes.
Well, but we can just, we can.
Just delete that part.
We can delete that part and leave the rest of it. Yeah, unfortunately, this, there's no way that you're going to get out of being a policeman. You know, I mean, we can't write restrictions so tight that, that you're not going to have to, at some point, if, if there's, if things are bothering you, pick up the phone and call a building inspector. Granted that.
First you owe the developer.
Well, or, or Mark Kaplan, but if you have his phone number, I hope he gives you his phone number.
There he has it.
Okay. But.
I can't keep it from changing. All right, why don't, why don't we go with the.
Then we'll remove that one sound.
Yeah, move that one, that rule.
Okay. Good. All right.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I'm Marcy Goldsmith, 425 Glen Road, and so hearing about the light posts down at the end of the driveway near the street is new information for me, and I'm actually very excited about this change because my driveway shares the opening with that driveway, and it is really dark. And so when people are, have never been to the house, have come, they've missed the driveway, if there's trees there, it's a little dangerous. Winter, you have a little ice, it's a little more dangerous. So it's exciting to hear that change. And I'm just wondering if there was some sort of compromise, because I don't necessarily want the light on every day, but if the new owner was having company, they might want to be able to just turn the light on so people coming down the street or coming up the street can see where to turn.
Well, it'll be on a motion detector, but we talked about having an override switch, so people could flip the switch and, you know, is there expecting a lot of company or something?
It's great, because literally when my mom has come over and she's taken the ride because she's old enough and is frail enough to get it, I mean, the ride drivers have no idea where to go, and actually having the for sale sign has been a cute turn there. So, you know, hopefully that's going to go away someday and we'll have a light in the override. I'm really thrilled with that change.
Okay. The only other thing I would suggest is that we let people know that our standards on blasting are pretty stringent. So, you know, it's not just a matter of, oh, we were following the state standard. So.
So do you want them to come in and give you a blasting plan?
No, we're going, that's a requirement. I mean, the, the standard.
Before they can get a building permit, they have to do it.
Yeah, the standard is going to be very similar to 105 Concord Road for the blasting, very similar. Or to 253 Matterbrook, you know, that kind of level. It's more stringent than the state standard.
I'm sure it'll be fine. It'd be great, I'll see if I can get a copy of whatever.
Yeah, oh, you will, it'll be in the decision. And, you know, the other thing that we like to try to do, recognizing that can't ever tell what exactly what's underground, is some sort of idea of the timeframe, you know, what you're going to be doing and how long it's going to take. Is it, are you going to be hammering, are you going to be blasting? How much hammering, how much blasting, how long? You know, the, we're going to ask for that in the blasting plan so that people have an idea of what they can expect in terms of that kind of disruption to their lives. So, no problem. Just sort of let you know that that's going to be there. Okay.
And how do we get that?
Oh, you'll get a copy of the decision.
About to end the decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Any other comments? So early, I don't know, I have so much time to fill. In that case, we'll continue to look at the practice.
October 29th at 10:30 for the decision.
So we will, we will continue the hearing on the 29th, read the draft bylaw, the draft decision language. And people are welcome to come and review the language with us and make whatever comments you would like to. And then we anticipate voting on the decision that evening, on October 29th.
At what time?
Betsy, what time?
10:30.
10:30.
That's, this is, this is one thing both the developer and I agreed on. This is past our bedtime.
You should have to be sitting on this side of the table.
Past all of our bedtimes.
Uh, so, do I have a second on that?
Second.
My favor.
I, I agree.
Good night all. We're staying here. We still have business here. I don't know where we're gonna decisions at.
Well...
What's up, Dave?
I'm going on to...
Yeah.
I'm going to, so, we'll take it then, no problem.